All right, we are back. Um, let's start with public health.
Okay, so what we have today is we just have one item, pretty easy.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Mine's really just an update. I don't have any action, um, requests from the board this morning. So last week, uh, we reviewed the amended homeless response system awards. So I did an updated breakdown of what the awards look like now with, uh, coordinated entry, split in half between Crossroads Housing and the Youth Connection, and then eviction prevention and housing and essential needs awarded to Crossroads Housing. Everything else remains the same.
So does this include everything or just the new, uh, what we discussed?
This is everything.
So what they started with before we did anything?
And we're, the contracts, we're working really hard on them. We have to meet with a provider, so it's gonna take a little bit more time, but we're taking care to make sure that everything aligns with the, um, Commerce just released the Consolidated Homeless Grant Guidelines after July 1st, so we're making sure that all of our documents match that. Um, so hopefully, if not next Monday, then the following Monday when Commissioner Trask is back from vacation.
Yes, yeah, 'cause it doesn't have to be on the Tuesday.
No, no, no.
There will be no action before then, and you're gonna speak to all of them before you even sign their contracts?
There was a lot of, it's summer, so there's been a lot of vacations, people out, so, um, I think people are back now, so we're hopefully gonna start having meetings this weekend, next week. Any questions?
No, I like this better. Made me happier.
And then, um, I will be putting out, you'll be getting it, it should be Monday, the public notice for board positions.
Okay, for the Board of Health.
Board of Health, yeah. And then we just, we just canceled the meeting that was gonna be tomorrow with legislative team that's coming in, uh, well, the governor's reps having, had to step out, so we're gonna redo that on the 25th of August.
I'm just gonna make a snarky one.
Okay.
I will hold that one in.
Okay, so, um, and really there's no prep work, it's just, we're just gonna bring them in and talk about FPHS and, you know, what we've done in the past with, with funding and how the cuts have affect, will affect things going forward.
FPHS?
Foundation Public Health Services.
Do we have all the acronyms down yet?
No.
No.
And just so you know, Tim Sheldon was a senator and everything, and was commissioner three terms in a row, and he still didn't know what any of the damn labels meant, so don't, don't feel bad about it. I mean, every time, it was a mandatory rule, you had to say it when he was at the table.
Well, and it was, it was a, a multi-year project that I was involved in from the very start. And what we did is, it started over a cup of coffee at Spokane Public Health, 2009 or 10, something like that. And we looked at all the things that public health can do, and then what are things that we have to do? And started shrinking down to those, and if we're gonna do these things, how do we fund those things? And that's been a, what, a 14-year process that we've been working on that, so.
Still a work in progress.
Still a work in progress.
Also, can we make sure that when we're handing things out, like the needle exchange, and we're doing tents and sleeping bags and things like that, can do one for one? So they have to bring one in?
Yeah, right now I-
Because I think that'll, that might slow down the mass amount of garbage that is out there.
Yeah, and we did not order any more tents and sleeping bags this time.
And just as a reminder to back up what she's saying, that was the agreement when we started?
With it, with the needles.
Yes, it was, and if, if things get out there, I don't know that that was the agreement, because we wanted to make sure they weren't in the fields and the, in the park and everything else. Because that was a hard one for us to swallow.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Okay.
Do you wanna give me a call later?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, I'll call, I'll give you a call later if it's okay with you.
Yeah, fine, yeah.
We'll talk about that.
Okay.
Sounds good.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, do we have public works?
If we do, I'll see if they're out there. Are they out there?
Jen, you wanna present for public works?
I do not see them.
Do you not see them?
I do not.
Well, let's see, solid waste recycling and outer station transfer. I know Loretta's still having fun, I think, shouldn't go back until, like, 20, I think.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, you can do the solid waste one, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, what you got?
Basically-
I agree, let's do it.
No, it's just an extension.
Yeah.
Yeah, for the transfer station.
Agreeable.
Okay.
And this is the, extending the contract with?
With Mason.
Mason County Garbage and Recycling.
Which is not part of Mason County Government, just to make sure.
Say it again, because people think- Mason County Garbage and Recycling, not part of- Has nothing to do with the contract.
Yeah. All right, we good with that?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
They've done a great job.
They really have.
And I like how they've handled the vouchers, and we're getting more out of it, and I saw them at the expo, I think it was, and they're considering trying to find ways to get us some more to help us out, and-
Yeah, yeah, they're awesome.
That's how you work with people, I like it.
All right.
I'm waiting for his, so.
County Administrator?
Is it me?
It's you.
Nice. All right, I think, uh, Kim's up first.
Kim and Jeff. Come on up, Jeff. I am so excited about this one. Well, we'll start with that one. A few things for your consideration this morning. Um, we have Jeff Slakey with us from Shelton Public School District.
What was his name again?
He's the CTE Academy Navigator. Um, he's gonna give us an overview of the Career Connect learning in the CTE Academy. The district's been building this partner, a really strong partnership with community to help students explore real-world career scenarios and develop those transferable skills. And he's gonna provide us with an overview of the program, discuss how the county might be able to join and support that program.
Yeah, um, so yeah, my name's Jeff Slakey, and this, right now I'm with the Shelton School District doing the CTE stuff, and I just want to talk with you all and, uh, hope to get your blessing and next steps forward in an internship program that the CTE Department has been doing through the Shelton School District for the last, well, it's actually just been the last school year. So they brought me, uh, in to work with them, uh, knowing so many folks around the community. And at the beginning of last year, we didn't have any internship opportunities, and by the end of the year, we were able to work with, uh, about 60 partners and have 80 openings, uh, for students and offer a grand total of about 1,200 hours of internship opportunities at different places, including Master Gardeners, and, uh, we were at Sierra Pacific, and the EDC has been a great partner with us. And so I would love to be able to bring students in on a, it's a 20-hour internship job experience here to the county where pretty much anybody in county government who's, feels comfortable and is able to bring these kids in, and, uh, there'll be some onboarding process, and then they'll spend about 15 hours with them, understanding what the job is and how real-world experience, excuse me, real-world experience matters, and that there are good paying jobs here local. So when they graduate high school, maybe they go off to college or something, go get their law degree or whatever, but they still are able, uh, thinking about coming back here to the district, uh, to Shelton and Mason County. And so we are looking at, uh, two students per experience. So for example, uh, somebody, two students would come in, follow Travis around, kinda get an understanding of what he does as the county administrator, and how that role is important in government. The two students per is to kind of help with a buddy system, so they work together on this one, they feel a little more comfortable. Uh, that also, as, uh, we've been talking in the department, helps when we're thinking about other departments. I see, like, Kelly's on the call here, so like, in public works, right? Uh, if he's open to this or something like this, two students could go with him to a job site, you know? And that breaks down the one-on-one kind of, uh, any concerns anybody may have there. Uh, when it comes to sensitive information, we have great partnerships right now with Mason Health, and the students and the parents all have gone through HIPAA training, so they understand the privacy concerns, especially when it comes to medical. So we can definitely adapt that to whatever jobs that they would do here to follow along, so they understand what's going on. And, um, the way I see it up there is there's the academy model, where, uh, if you're not familiar with the school setting now, they kinda choose an academy, business, finance, and hospitality, manufacturing and engineering, health science, and things like that. And so then the students go, "Well, I think I wanna do this." Then we would match them with a position here, uh, and then they get the job experience, some real-world experience, and at the end, uh, hopefully, a letter of recommendation or a le- letter that says, "Oh, you've been really great." This past year, we had a student who was a freshman, and we're mostly looking at juniors and seniors, but we did have a freshman come into the EDC, and he just blew Kevin away. And, uh, at the end of the whole thing, at our final dinner, the EDC said, you know, "We really love this kid, he was really good, he was talking a little bit about wanting to do a summer school at U-Dub Business, but it was super expensive." Well, they loved him so much that the EDC, uh, decided to pay for that summer program for him. So he's gonna be a really great person, uh, who, over the course of his next three years, could find himself in another 10 positions across all of Mason County. Um, last year, we worked with Mason Transit, and so they were able to pick kids up at the high school and bring them to wherever they needed to go. And so I'm looking to build that partnership out even more, uh, including some work at Mason Transit and their engineer shop and the mechanic shop and things like that. So that's a great way and a barrier taken away from the students who may not have transportation, which we know is kind of an issue at times, especially if you're in high school. So, um, if you have any big questions about how this may work, uh, I definitely ask. Otherwise, I think if you are open to this idea, we would start finding kids, finding departments, and finding department heads who may be amenable to get kids in here. Uh, again, it's a short, it's 20 hours on the books, but it's really about 15 hours or so in learning, because the transit time is part of it, uh, the onboarding and the offboard, and afterwards, kind of, uh, after-action reports are, are what they do. And so it mirrors, especially with the transportation, any sort of actual, uh, work issues that they might have. You know, sometimes the bus is late, or sometimes they gotta go here, and this is how they deal in real-world experiences. So that's kinda what we've been doing this last year, it was super successful, and I'm really hopeful that we can get even more kids, uh, out of the classroom and into learning what's going on now, so.
Many, many, many years ago, when I first came in, uh, we had some programs that we were doing like that. We had, uh, they were learning how to archive and how to do certain filing and work with the different departments, it was extremely successful. I don't know why it didn't continue. Uh, I know we even talked at one point about a stipend, because it was beneficial to the county and not just the student, but to the county, because work was being done. And back in the day, we had archival issues every single solitary department. So, uh, I'm definitely a hundred percent supportive and look forward to what you come up with.
And I think in kind of what you're talking about there and those situations, we have had longer-form internships in the past where it was, uh, 180 hours or something like that. But the way the schools are set up now, the trimester setting, the timing doesn't really work, and so these kind of short bursts make it a lot more accessible for them. Plus, uh, it gives them a chance to see if they actually like the job, right? So they're not gonna come in later down the road and go, "Oh, I think I wanna be the clerk," or something. And then they, you go through the whole process, and they apply, and then there's this and that, and then they show up day one, and they're like, "Oh, this isn't what I thought it was." So it's really an opportunity for them to get a good sense of county government, how impactful county government can be in the grand scheme of things here. And, um, we've talked with the city as well. Um, they've shown a lot of interest in having people come and be part of their different departments. You know, uh, I've talked with Sheriff Spurling a little bit about that, and there's a lot of opportunity in the sheriff's office, like you were saying, with paperwork and things like that. And again, privacy, we totally understand the issues when it comes to those types of things. And if there's, if we can adapt any sort of confidentiality agreements that you have with new, new hires to a high school setting with their parents as well, I mean, we're totally down to do whatever it takes to get these kids, get these kids in here.
You know, Evergreen used to actually offer, uh, the ability for them to come in, they give them a structure, they call it a class, and let them, uh, get credit, uh, college credit for doing it.
Yeah.
I don't know if they still do things the same way anymore at Evergreen. But that's how they used to do it, they literally could, you could create your own class, and as long as you had a mentor that was watching over it.
And, and that's what's so great, I think, about these programs, is that people, is the mentorship aspect, because the, the kids are in a new setting, they're learning from community leaders like yourselves, and, you know, in those 15 hours, and that's just one setting, right? You could probably say, "Oh, I really like this kid," or you made the connection, and you could do it even more to build even a better, uh, rapport with them. But that is a huge part of it too, that I see, is the mentorship, is being able to then call on one of you later and just maybe say, "Hey, you know, I'm getting ready to graduate high school now," or something, and you're like, "Oh, yeah, well, I remember when." Uh, we did this at the radio station many, many, many years ago, uh, and our intern at that time, um, has really blossomed into a, a big community leader. He's sat on a bunch of boards at the Youth Connection, he works at the sheriff's office currently, Caleb, and, uh, he really, he was in with me doing the morning show, and he learned a lot. And he learned a lot about what it means to have these types of roles in, especially a small community like this.
Do you know Mendy Harlow?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Mendy Harlow, the director of the Gonna Salmon Enhancement Group, started out as an intern slash, uh, then Mercoor, then slash, blah, blah. Now she's the director of the same organization she came in to help with.
And one of the park rangers at Gerald Cove, who does all the island parks, uh, he started as an intern at the Salmon Center too. Uh, he came on the radio with her and I, and then he's now a park ranger. So these types of experiences really, I think, help the foundation of what these kids wanna do in the future and what, and especially, you know, kind of move things that aren't what they like out of the way, so, yeah.
Any types of restrictions on what they're allowed to do?
Well, so, that's where we're looking into the, kind of, the transit part of it, like, so for the sheriff's office, for example, um, they can't go on like ride-alongs, right? They can't do that. But they could maybe team up with somebody if they have to go, uh, look at, see, one thing that Sheriff Spurling brought up one time was looking at VIN numbers on derelict vehicles, maybe, or going to, uh, you know, nothing that would put their safety at risk, right? And it would be a set time to begin with, Tuesdays, Thursdays, a couple hours. The bus picks them up at the high school, the bus drops them off here, they scatter to the different departments. And we've talked here, um, a couple weeks ago, thanks to Human Resources, of course, for letting me talk in this time too, um, but we talked about having, you know, if we're gonna think big, five students, so that'd be, or five opportunities at specific individual places, and five opportunities maybe where you rotate each time. You know, just kind of based on whatever it takes, and then they get a full-fledged look at county government. A lot of the NJROTC students have talked with me about their interest in this type of thing. Um, but really, any class, we can adapt to a certain department or a certain type of, um, job here, so.
I am super excited about this, and, uh, went to one of the, the meetings at the high school, and the room was full.
Yeah.
With, with employers, with students. It was so neat to see the excitement. Gretchen and Ty are awesome.
Yeah.
They're very passionate about this too.
Gretchen is the, the overall CTE director for the district. Uh, and so too, in addition to that, this year, we're helping to facilitate some opportunities with Choice and Cedar. Um, and then Ty is the, uh, boots-on-the-ground at the school, where he's able to make these connections and find these kids. And we've had, you know, opportunities to really kind of change the path on some of these kids' future high school, right? They maybe come into the program really wanting to do this, uh, but they're not passing all the classes, and I get that, right? I wasn't, I, I wasn't totally into school in certain grade classes when I was in high school, right? But I found something I liked, and this student, he said to her, you know, we, "I shouldn't even be letting you go on this opportunity because you're failing some of your classes." And, "Well, give me a chance, whatever." Flourished in the program, and then you can go back and say, "Well, we would love for you to do this again, but, you know, you gotta kind of pick up your other studies." Uh, but that, you know, that turn could have kept that student from dropping out and turning into another statistic, so, um, it's not even necessarily a grade thing. It's a good fit for what we're thinking. And Ty and Gretchen, since they're at the school all the time, they know these kids very well, and they can see, you know, stuff off, outside of what the paper says for their grades and things.
Yeah, yeah, it's exciting, so, I like it.
Whatever. What do you need it for us? Anything else on it?
I think next, we'll just kind of keep talking here, and you'll probably see some notes go out. And so I would, from you guys, I would, uh, just encourage the people around you to think about this as an opportunity to show off your, their skills and their positions and to be open to having a couple kids, um, kind of job shadow, work experience. And you can have them do as much or as little as, as kind of you want them to do, but the more hands-on, the better, I think, for that.
I gotta assure you, Commissioner Trask is so excited about this, if we tried to say no, she'd cattle protest.
That's right. That's right.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, imagine them going out to the syrup plants and getting excited about chemistry and biology and-
And, and that, and that brings-
And mechanics.
That brings up a really good point. Like, the CTE classes are, are very unique. There's welding, there's mechatronics, there's all these other things. But there is so much in the general studies as well, math and science and biology and things like that, that, um, that these, all these students can really benefit from. And plus, it, it means a lot more if you're in the middle of the public works and you're seeing the water treatment plant or something like that, and you think, "Oh, I understand," you know, "science," or something. You know, it really helps click on those, those things.
Ties everything together.
Yeah, so.
Answers the question, "What am I ever gonna use this for when I go to law?"
Yeah, that's exactly right, yeah.
X equals one, and one.
And, and we've had stu-, we've had students asking for opportunities in, uh, the prosecutor's office or wanting to get matched up with lawyers and things like that, so.
Do that, please.
Yeah, and the engineers, and there's, there's a need out there that people, I don't think people really even know what openings or what, where the biggest needs are, 'cause it's everywhere.
Yeah, and, and again, um, we will answer any of your, anybody's questions when it comes to privacy concerns and things like that. We've had a great partnership with the hospital when it comes to HIPAA and Sierra Pacific, right? When it comes to safety and things like that. Parents and the students both have to go through some documentation and, and sign things and understand that, you know, this is, it's a, it's a job, basically, you know, it's a, it's a real experience.
Yeah, and thank you, Kim.
I'll add to that for, for a different venue.
My pleasure, this is gonna be fun. So we'll work on the logistics, uh, with Jeff, and we're targeting the sec-, what'd you say, the second week of, uh, towards the end of September?
Yeah, you know, some of the teachers like to have, build their classroom expectations out, but, but at the same time, we wanna get this going and, and kind of roll it as often as we can, as we get these kids through. And, and again, you may have an opportunity to see a student more than once down here, and especially more than once in a different setting, to kind of really show off what's going on.
So myself and Caleb will put together logistics, put a little package to share with the department heads about the program and how we would structure it and see what we have to offer. Uh, probably start with a few and see where it goes.
And if anybody on the call is interested in this too, Mayor, I see you on there. Anybody else, please, uh, feel free to get in touch with me. Uh, most people know how to get in touch. There's, there's some thumbs up, I like seeing those. So maybe we can get even more going here this year. Oh, yeah, there's Tamara, for sure.
Nice, nice.
So, all right. Well, I appreciate your time.
Well, certainly they know how to pick the right cheerleader for the program, don't they? They have that figured out.
Yeah, so.
For sure.
Any other questions?
No, let us know what we can do to help.
Okay.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
You guys have a great day.
You too.
Couple more things quickly. I can actually see. So, we've got-
Yeah, see you guys. See you guys.
Start with this one. So as you know, we've had a difficult time filling the chief public defender position, and so we're a critical mass with that at this point. But we did offer the position to a candidate that, that turned us down. However, um, they did offer to support the program while we are looking for the replacement. So my ask to view is to consider bringing a contractor on board, Angela Avery Law. She'll work with us from August 1st to the end of the year, handling the, um, the legal side of the house, so looking at setting up the new standards for the office, supervising the attorneys, working with our incumbents in the office to establish a better protocol for handling. Oh, that's not the one you have?
It's okay.
I'm sorry.
I read both already, but I just was thinking.
So I do have a copy, a draft copy of the contract. I only brought one, 'cause it's, it's fairly long and legal, but the highlights, um, for the particular, particulars of the contract are, um, to the end of the year, from August 1st to the end of the year, we'll be providing workspace, the contractor, of course, providing all their equipment. We'll be paying for reimbursement for overnight stays when the person is here in, in the region. They are from Vancouver. And that's, anything, any specific questions that you have about the contract?
Just a comment, uh, we had tasked, uh, Commissioner Trask to go on. We have a big issue here at this county and have to deal with some things, and wanna thank Commissioner Trask for stepping up to take a leadership role in this. And, uh, if I understand correctly, you are supportive of this?
Oh, absolutely.
Then I am, I am as well. We need to move forward.
Yep.
And so you'll have this on the agenda for the second? The second, yes, okay. Okay, the next, um, issue that we have is also from the public defender's office. Uh, the incumbent that currently serves as the administrative assistant has assumed a large portion of the administrative functions that were performed by the, the chief at, when they left. Um, this incumbent has picked up the slack, she's done a great job of keeping the office moving forward, and also brought to light a lot of those higher-functioning administrative things that the program manager, as the, the chief would have, was doing at the time. Maggie Houston has picked up. And so we did take a look at her position and the duties that she's performing. It certainly warrants a reallocation of the position. Um, it is functioning at a much higher level. There is a position that we have in the county, it's an administrative services manager. We have one of those over in the prosecutor's office. So my recommendation is that we reallocate Ms. Houston to that position as a best fit, and we'll need to look at the job description of the administrative services manager, 'cause it is very unique to the prosecutor's office, but the, the skill set, the level of responsibility and the functions of those two positions are pretty much identical. Um, just a different, just a different body of work that they're supporting, but the functions that they're doing are, are much the same. So my recommendation, um, would be to increase the position to that administrative services manager, base wage increase of about 25% um, with the different pay scales that the position would fall on. She's been doing the job. She's been doing the job. And she is amazing, so I highly recommend that we do that also, okay?
Same comment as before, we tasked, uh, Commissioner with going forward with this and keeping her was a very important thing for this community and for this county, uh, and keeping her, uh, and her stand with us, 'cause it didn't have to be that way. And, uh, it was a lot of good hard work that went into that, and so again, I will be supportive, and I say thank you to everybody involved on this one. And there's a lot of good hard work that went into that and so again, I will be supportive and I say thank you to everybody involved on this one.
Yeah, definitely support.
And just as a further point of clarification, we also discussed a three-month retro on that as well.
She's been earning it all along.
She's been fulfilling this role the whole time.
Yes, when the chief public defender left, uh, Ms. Houston picked up the duties about beginning of March and has been bringing continuity to that office ever since, so definitely wanna recognize that.
That's, that's eligible for a green star. I think we should do that, recognize her for her exceptional work for the county.
I am so excited about everything that you brought forward, so. Fun that ways, the, right now. For sure. Glad to have you here.
Okay, um, so we will move on. We've got two letters of support from PUDs for PUD number one, number three. I think Jeff Solaki used my entire allocation of words, so if you're already in approval, please let me know, but, uh, these are. Perfect, yeah, there we go.
Yep, these are no brainers.
Alright.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yes, thanks, Jeff. I appreciate that. Alright, so I'll move on to the next one, which is, um, this one is a parcel number two-two zero zero five dash five-three dash zero 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 one-two. It's, uh, fifteen eighty-one East Phillips Lake Loop Road. And just wanted to bring this to the board. This was a tax title foreclosure auction. And, um, because they didn't receive any bids, then the county can, um, then take that out um, and put it on the market. Just wanted to bring that forward for approval for Commissioner Netherland to, to sign the papers with.
But I was tasked last meeting with going out and talking to, uh, to Habitat for Humanity in regards to this parcel. And currently, uh, except for parcels that they have right here in town that they cannot, because the expenses too high, they're on their last one. So it would make a big difference if we would be interested in doing that and, and, uh, we did that in the past. We supplied them to a lot of the cross properties in, in many years ago, uh, so they could, uh, build and, and maintain low-income housing for the community and give opportunities. Uh, it'd be a wonderful thing to be able to keep doing that for them. Again, there is a concept that somebody may be willing to make an offer on that property. But, uh, I'd like, with your permission, to ask our realtor to see if there's any properties in the North Mason area, because they've asked about that. If there is, then bring that back. But if not, move forward on this one to, to provide it for Habitat for Humanity.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
No, I think it's a great idea. They, I, I met with their, their new executive director. I don't know, I'm not sure what his technical title is, but it, this would be a perfect opportunity. I think other counties have done the same thing and some for us to reach out and do it, I think would be great.
Okay, so just to verify, I will call and ask if there are any properties in the north, cause that's one of the things they'd ask for, North Mason region. If there are not, I'll have them send us this one to get it under contract to bring back to us for final adoption, uh, at one dollar.
Yeah, that'd be fine. I, I don't see why the two are either or, I mean.
Okay, well, I, I'd be interested in giving them more than one. We gave them many properties in the past, so I just didn't know everybody's head on that. So if we are, then we'll just go forward on this one and.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, me too.
I'll make it happen.
Perfect. I think that was my last briefing item. I've got many discussion items, but I'll do that whenever you choose to.
I thought she had a briefing item on, uh, Island Lake.
Is there?
It's just a discussion item.
Yeah, that's what I thought. It's not in my briefing.
But I do have something that came up, um, this morning related to the voluntary stewardship program. Do you want me to do that now or?
Sure.
Okay. So, um, last week I briefed to you the, um, Washington State Conservation Commission contract for the VSP through, um, Mason Conservation District. And, um, this morning I got an email that, um, they already have an amendment to that contract for forty thousand dollars, um, for a new, um, VSP guideline for, uh, capital. So, um, I wanted to see if we could just add that amendment to the contract onto the August fifth action agenda along with the original contract, just so that we're not, um, you know, I can brief it again next Monday and we can approve it on separately if you'd like, but I feel like it should all kind of go together.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, great. So, um, so would you like me to brief it next Monday also or?
Yeah, she wants you to brief it next Monday.
Uh, for last, make sure we have a copy of it, so that at least we have it to look at, so if we have any questions, we can and.
I'll just then, um, throw it on the agenda for the fifth. Okay, thank you. That was all I have. Thanks.
Island Lake.
Island Lake.
Um, well, Island Lake.
That was, that was more for, uh, me, discussion item. She's just here in support of me, yes, me making the request. So I was hope, actually hoping to talk to Mr. Auditor before the meeting, just so I could confirm, however, I do know that Jennifer talked to him about.
They just communicated with you telepathically.
Perfect, yes. Generally with me, it's telepathetically, but you know, I, I appreciate that. Um, but, uh, the, the request was going to be that, um, it was part of the ballot process that the auditor's office would, uh, handle that portion of the, she kind of inherited this from Diane and wasn't one of her regular duties and needs to focus on her budget stuff, and so it would be helpful all the way around. Um, graciously, the auditor has said that his office would be willing to do that so long as we made the request.
Cause I think it is, that is the proper place for it. We shouldn't be doing. Thank you for stepping up to do that.
Yeah, definitely, thank you.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have a, a policy with the steps that show what happens when and where.
So where will Steve get the information on how many ballots each vote counts for that, from the assessor or does that come from you?
Um, so it's kind of a team effort, so it originally comes from the assessor, goes down to our office and we'll go over to elections.
Yeah, and I've had, uh, Chris take over a lot of the administrative work that she was doing on that, so it'll probably run through him and, and to, to the auditor's office.
That's perfect.
Cool.
So you guys hand over the, the data and the information. We're ready to spring into action.
Perfect. Alright, well, we will move back and make sure that that happens. So do you want my other items now?
Yes, please.
Okay, alright. Uh, just a couple of things I wanna loop back on from the previous meeting. Um, Joint Animal Services and the Sheriff's Office had their meeting last week. Um, I've asked them to come do a joint briefing together on the eleventh of August. So they will be back to talk about, um, kind of their discussions and what services would look like under that contract and, and have a final discussion with the board before you make a decision about how you want that to proceed. But they, they did want you to know that they had a productive meeting. I was there. It was a good, good conversation about what services are and aren't provided, how that looks, what they do in their other contracts, so, um, that will be coming forward. Uh, I don't think it was discussed in here, however, um, Commissioner Netherland brought to me a request about the batting cages out at, um, MCRNA and whether or not they can be opened for a longer period of time. Um, did I forward the email on that? So the, the real discussion was, it was a request about whether or not we keep the batting cages open the rest of the year, um, especially during those winter months. Um, I believe they're open through October now and then they, they don't open back up till, till early spring. Uh, we did talk to the, the staff up there and they said, well, there's two problems. One, they do repairs during that time, also to the batting cages. But I think that's a small period of time. The real concern was is, um, the balls that they use get really fragile in cold weather and they bust all up when they start hitting them and so, um, they were afraid that if they just left it open so that they could do that, then it would cause damage to the equipment up there. What their recommendation was, and I think it might satisfy the need of the folks up there, was if there are groups like the high school baseball team or some of these other groups that want to have times where they can have groups come up and, and do the batting cage stuff, that they could open it up during those times in order to, uh, meet those needs. And then there would just need to be some process by which they contact our staff and make that happen, so.
Which they do currently to use fields, so that, or we already have that in place.
Yeah, so I think that would be kind of a middle ground from keeping it open all the time and then having the equipment damaged versus allowing them the opportunity to use that.
And we could also have a policy that it can't be open below a certain degree, you know, if it's below freezing or something like that.
Yeah, or whatever temperature.
Yeah.
I'd be supportive of that.
Okay. Um, the other thing to bring back around was Commissioner Netherland asked about the, um, Farm Bureau and having them come back and talk about an egg committee. Um, Chris has been reaching out trying to get, uh, um, get a meeting set up to talk about that further, but he just hasn't been able. But he's tried several times last week, but I just wanted to let you know. He's continuing to try and I think Commissioner Netherland said he would reach out as well.
Hopefully he's okay, cause he always returns our phone calls.
Maybe he's on vacation.
That happens.
Um, another issue that we wanted to discuss, uh, in this meeting was the discussion about, um, office public defender and raising the contract rate from a hundred dollars to a hundred and fifty dollars an hour in order to, uh, make those positions more attractive and so.
Absolutely, it's for the misdemeanor.
For the misdemeanors, yes. We have already raised the, the contract rate for the felony level.
Yep.
But, uh, so would you like that to come forward in a, for the regular meeting next week as?
On Tuesday.
Yeah, okay. Yep, we can take care of that.
And just know I won't be here, but a hundred percent supportive.
Well, I won't be here either, so it will be, uh, done in our absence. Uh, the only other thing I wanted to bring up was, um, recently the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office went and did a inspection both online and on-site of our facility out there at, uh, um, the Oakland Bay Park. And just wanted to report back that, uh, John and all the, the parks folks obviously are doing a really good job out there because it came back with a clean report saying they were doing exactly what they were supposed to be doing based on, based on what the, the contract was and that, uh, the park was clean and in good shape and looked well taken care of, park hours were great and they were, they were doing exactly what they were supposed to be doing, so.
They're strict on that one, so that's a good, that's a good.
So I just thought I would loop back and let you all know that, uh, we did get that report back and they probably wouldn't have said anything about it, but it's important to highlight that they, they're doing good work out there, so.
I'd love to find a way that we could make money with our parks.
Well, when we start looking at the other options, like for Mason Lake, that may change the whole thing.
Yeah, I'm excited about that. Our parks are beautiful and there's no reason that we shouldn't or couldn't do something with them.
And I don't know if many people know about that one. That one's kind of a hidden, hidden gem out there.
I don't think they're gonna let us, but we gotta remember, we can still stand up once in a while and, uh, stuff, cause that, that's one they've been really strict on. They don't want us to do anything, but I think they're incorrect. And we helped them a lot too over the years, so it's an incredible park. We all went on a trip, yeah.
Yeah, Diane forced us to go out and see our parks. Oh my gosh, it was, it was terrible.
Horrible day. Alright, and that is it for me, that I know of, till you told me.
I don't think I've, I've never been to.
Ready, you missed your shot.
I know, but, well, no, not really.
Passed.
Yeah, yeah, I briefed it for you.
Perfect.
Yeah, it was tough. But I do have one, um, the Q and A for the Bellford store.
I'd like to ask that, uh, you, cause I was pretty upset when I was reading it, some of the stuff, I completely can't believe it's in there. But instead of embarrassing anybody, I'd like to ask that I can meet with, uh, our administrator and them, uh, this next week.
Put it in writing so that we can, cause I, if you've got questions about it or, or whatever, I would like to know what, what your.
Yeah, no.
Questions and concerns are. So if it's in writing, that way we can.
I agree with that too, but in this way, we could maybe, cause I said, I'd rather not embarrass somebody if I don't have to. And having an intermediary in the room might make a, a difference on that. I'll put everything in, else in writing and stuff too.
Okay. Yeah, and then I really would like it to get out there so that people can see it.
So I don't have any problem with that at all. Can we just set up a, probably can't be today, but if we can set it up on a.
Yeah, I'll set it up with you.
Okay.
Cause we're leaving, me and him are gonna be gone, uh.
Of this week?
So I have something completely different. If, are we done with that one or?
Um, I guess.
Okay. Uh, I have a film that's gonna be dear to all your guys' hearts a little bit, cause we kind of all have a lot of the same mindset in certain things. Uh, our comprehensive plan is pretty important to all of us, it's important to the, the county. One of the things to remember about a comprehensive plan is whenever we do it, that's where it opens up to being, uh, attacked or challenged or anything else. They only have a set amount of time to do that. So when we have these things, there's always dangers. That's why the harsh decision. This year, as you know, we have a, uh, a sub element for climate change in there. And some of the work that's been done, because there's been different people looking at different stuff, as well as myself, and I've been doing homework afterwards. We've gotten pretty extensive, um, which makes me nervous. And I'm gonna explain why again, because literally, if it doesn't have to be there, that's always been our strength in Mason County. We don't just bend with whatever they say and then we give them all this fodder to use against us. We only have in there what's required by law. And you over here have been very strict on that as well. In reading this, it's gone a long ways and I wanna read you something that is kind of interesting. And, you know, and I could be wrong, but this is where I have Washington State Counties, comprehensive plans must include a climate change and resilience element. This element has two mandatory sub elements. One, greenhouse gas emissions, a reduction sub element. This is a mandatory for the eleven most pop-, most populated counties. We're number twenty.
Yeah.
So I don't think, I, see, I, I thought we might be on the same page. Number two.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Number two is another aspect of it, is the resilience sub, uh, element mandatory for fully planning cities and counties. This sub element aims to improve climate preparedness and response prioritizations, uh, in actions for communities. Disproportionately, proportionately affected by climate change and natural hazards like sea, uh, level rise, flooding, wildfires. This requirement may be met by adopting a natural hazard mitigation plan that satisfies this sub element. That's all we have to have by law. So I'm just bringing this up because, and you guys are welcome to look at this, but this sure reminds me when we did the comprehensive plan for Shoreline years ago and it just kept getting bigger and bigger. Set it back, it took two years to rip everything out. By the time they were done, they've done a lot of hard work and I appreciate all the work they've done. But if we get in front of it now, it may not come back to us like this and they may be able to avoid a lot. So I wanted to see what you guys felt.
Well, as far as CO2, we're a net negative. And we, we subtract CO2 more than we create it by a long shot, cause we're a timber county. So we should get like extra credit. Yeah, and anything we can do to.
Yeah.
When you write patents, the attorneys tell you be specifically vague. Well, that's exactly what we need to do there. Is be specifically vague, so we cover the things we have to cover, but.
Well, yeah, only what we have to. And I've said that for years.
I know you have.
I don't want, we should never add more than what we have to, because legislature's just gonna change it anyway.
Yep, and they're gonna challenge us on every aspect of it. The less we have in there.
If it's just what we have to have.
Then it's harder, as long as we provide, and those two things, we don't have to do the one, although we are. And we could offset the other with a, a small change. So I think.
So this is what we have now?
Yeah, I think we have, three of us are saying the same thing, that, and I'll, I'll send you that and we can verify that that's accurate for the state. Uh, we wanna get to the minimalist aspect of this and ask the planning commission to do this now, instead of waiting until they bring it to us and then we send it back to be taken out.
I would say Kel has been working that direction for quite some time.
Yeah, I'm sure it makes a big difference when we say this is it and that's how we want it, because that's, and I think that's what we have, right? We have three commissioners saying, okay, alright, do you need anything for me to explain it different or other than that?
Only if you could either show, show me what you're talking about, you know, the act, the actual page, that would help me out.
I'll, I'll send to you.
Okay, great.
I think that's wonderful, cause that's gonna avoid a lot of stuff in the future and it keeps us doing what we've always done best. Especially with comprehensive plan, there may be other stuff that we wanna just be safe on. That's what I have.
I have another totally different subject. There's, uh. There's, uh, I'll say a movement, but, uh, that may not be exactly right. Uh, there's a group of individuals who want to have a convention of counties here in Washington. Like a convention of states, they're trying to use the same format. Two-thirds of the counties can call for a convention, the counties get together. The object is to give counties some authority back over the states. Give us some ability to stand up against unfunded mandates and things like that. So if we can pull this off, I don't, I don't know. I mean, there's, we have to talk to some, uh, some legal advice and see what you can actually pull off, but, uh, if we can, the object is to have senators elected by county, not by legislative district. So each county would either get one or two senators, depending on how it, how the convention came out. And so Mason County would have a senator, King County would have a senator, Fairland County would have.
Would be population.
It would not be population-based. It would be based on the way the United States is set up. The Senate in the United States Senate is based there to represent the states, to give the states some power over the federal government. What we'd like to do is to give the counties some authority over the state, so we can push back when the state is coming down on top of us. Um, and it, it seems like the ideal way to run a government. It works in the whole United States. I think it would work in the state. There are issues we'll have to deal with. We're gonna have to, it'll end up going to the Supreme Court back in nineteen sixty-four. Uh, a case with Kentucky and Arizona, they said, no, fourteenth amendment says equal protection under the law. Well, nobody made the argument back in sixty-four that, wait a minute, this US Senate doesn't have equal protection. Wyoming has the same number of senators as California or Texas or New York, or you can take whatever you want. So it, if it doesn't apply to the federal government, it shouldn't be forced upon the states. So there'll be some battles, but, uh, what, what the group is looking for is more counties willing to, to sign up and say, yep, we'll, we'll be part of this. And something we should talk about, but.
I don't even know if they need to talk about it, to be honest with you. I'm supportive of this and I have been for a while. Uh, I'm not sure that the convention, uh, is gonna be the way to go. If it was changed by, and I haven't done all the homework, but if it was changed by legislative action, it can be changed by a referendum.
I have a feeling what's gonna have to happen, it's gonna have to be a constitutional amendment to the Washington State Constitution. It doesn't really spell it out right now, but, um, there's no way that the current legislators will want to take away.
You think?
Their power, so it's gonna have to be imposed by the citizens. And it's something that, you know, it has some potential. There's also flaws, but, you know, it's, those things can be worked out. But it is a way for counties, doesn't matter, uh, it's not a partisan issue. It's about giving the counties some say in how the, the state gets away with unfunded mandates.
Well, I bet you there's a, a lot of the counties, even the, the, the larger counties, they are, or getting, there's so many unfunded mandates that are coming down.
Right.
I mean, OPD is one for sure.
It seems like a really good time to.
But just keep in mind, if it's created by, by legislative action, our referendum system in the state of Washington allows us a big leniency. Uh, I mean, are you asking to be appointed on behalf of the county?
Uh, would, not necessarily, but what I think, uh.
I need to have somebody stand up.
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to do that.
If you don't want to go, I'd go, but if you want to go.
I'd be happy to do that, um, but, uh, it's.
Happy for you to do that.
It depends on, um, you know, no counties have, have, uh, made this, uh, resolution or anything like that, that, you know, they'd sign up to be part of it. Um, what I'm suggesting is that we maybe talk to Tim and see what the ramifications are, but certainly I would love to be, you know, the first candidate to say, yeah, we're on board.
Well, and they're, not thinking just territories, still have, there's two places that we should be represented there. We should be represented through our, our voting process, which would be our auditor and our commissioner. I think would be a wise move on our part. If we're the first ones, I'm okay with that. That doesn't hurt my feelings at all, because it's gotta start somewhere. And you should always have two, cause you need a team. You always have to have a team when you start and then you can start to acquire more of a team.
I'd like to talk to Tim first.
Yeah.
And then go from there.
I talked to, uh, Matt Hawkins, who's a guy who's been kind of pushing this. I'm gonna talk to him on Saturday. Got through Friday, I don't know, days are all running together. But he's, yeah, he's really excited, thinks, you know, we can get prob, I mean, it takes twenty-six counties if we use the two-thirds requirement as a, you know, to call for the convention. None of that is structured in the Washington State Constitution.
That's the problem that I, I've seen.
Right.
It's not structured. There's a word, we're saying that, but it doesn't mean that it has any, any weight. That's why I was talking about the referendum process, which is in the constitution, allows us to do that and create it. Now, we've seen what they do to those referendum items that get passed. It's an embarrassment. It's sad to me.
I much guarantee if we do it with a referendum, the, the state legislature will sue the citizens instantly before it ever goes anywhere.
Funny thing is, they may not have standing, whether or not, I know that sounds like it's an off thing, but they may not have standing.
Madam Chair, may, may I offer three points of clarification? So first of all, I think, I think the convention of counties is a great idea. There's no, there's no pro, prohibition of it in our state constitution. The second thing is that, um, it would, to change the way we put seven, state senators in the senate, would take a state constitution amendment per Article thirteen. And, um, it would also have to work its way, if we wanted to change the way we apportion our senators, that gets to the heart of that Supreme Court decision. It would have to go back to the United States Supreme Court. So that's the pathway, but I think it's, it's worth pursuing.
It's absolutely, I think so. I think it's absolutely worth pursuing. But.
I think you've got three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right time, right place, Commissioner. You're in the right time, right place.
God, it's amazing.
I will, uh, I'll talk to Tim about it. I also have, uh, a few, uh, Supreme Court lawyers that I can reach out to, um, talk to them about it and see what their thoughts are. Jeffrey Helston and, and Joel Ard. I know them both. They, they both argue in front of the US Supreme Court, so.
Good, awesome.
I'll reach out to them. But regardless, I, I would like for us to move forward with it.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Tress is, uh, will ask him first, but you already have, if he's not gonna stand in the way of it. If he doesn't, we need to bring it back, but if he's not, let's move forward.
Will do.
Okay. All right, any calendar updates?
He's got me thinking, I'm looking up the law now, man. I'm, I'm curious as hell.
All right.
Calendar updates. Well, Randy and I will be at the risk pool starting Wednesday through Friday. I've got a tour of, well, I'm heading up, heading down to Raymond, uh, this afternoon. I'm actually late already, um, but, uh, it's an EDD meeting for the district, Economic Belt and District. They're meeting in Raymond today, so I'll be down there pretty much all afternoon. Risk pool, pretty much the rest of the week. Next week you're gone, so.
Yeah.
I will be chairing our meeting on Tuesday.
And Monday.
Yeah, Monday, yeah. That's interesting. Um, yeah, that's, that's right. There's a lot of plus twos, plus threes on that.
Yeah, I don't have any updates, other than what we're talking about on Tuesday. If I'm gone, I don't.
Madam Chair, I move for adjourned.
Second.
We're adjourned. Have a nice week.